Kathy, we have a quorum, so we shall proceed. Would you all please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance? I will ask trustee Reynolds to please lead us today.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item of business before we get to our first presentation, allow me to give us all a little bit of background. Signage, specifically wayfinding signs. Riverside needs to showcase the unique legacy of our national historic landmark community. We all believe that, we've all endeavored to do that. Signs highlight the location of Riverside, and signs increase awareness of where Riverside is. We've all seen the signs on interstate highways, the brown wayfinding signs that identify cultural institutions, tourist attractions, historic places. Never seen one with Riverside's name on it until this past week. Riverside through the years has made many overtures to various government agencies, to the Illinois Department of Transportation, and others seeking a brown wayfinding sign to recognize us for what we are, a national historic landmark community. We've always been met with a simple answer, no. Basically, they've always put us in what I've referred to as a catch-22 situation. We don't qualify under the federal highway and the IDOT rules because we're too small. We don't draw enough visitors to the village, so we're too small. But you can't get any more traffic or visitors unless you have a sign. So they've put us in a no-win situation, and I really was getting frustrated with that. So in a meeting with Senator Martin Sandoval, I mentioned this dilemma we're having, and lo and behold, you're looking at the sign that was a direct result of his intervention on our behalf. We have four of these signs that are placed on the Stevenson Expressway, one each on northbound and southbound Stevenson by Harlem Avenue, which is exit 283. So as you approach Harlem Avenue from either direction, the sign says Historic Riverside, exit 283. When you exit on the ramp from both southbound and northbound Stevenson at Harlem, you see that sign there. Obviously, the arrow points the other direction when you're at the other exit, but it gives the direction that we deserve, the historic marker for the Village of Riverside. Those signs were installed last week. The senator and I went out there and had the pleasure of standing among all the traffic, which was sort of exciting in and of itself, because that one's on the exit ramp. We also took some time and stood out on the interstate also. You got another picture there, or is that just that one? There, I think it's all of the same sign, but the ones on the interstate say exit 283. So with that, that's the background, and the basic background is we were never successful in getting this sign until now. So with that, I would like to call our state senator, Martin Sandoval, up to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I thought we were here to celebrate the signage. It's great to be here. I would like to say that, you know, it's unlikely that you will find incoming state legislators who are going to represent a new municipalities under a new district to really kind of take heed to much what the people or the elected officials of an area would want, even before you take office. I've been in office well over 15 years. I've served Cook County as a water reclamation commissioner for two terms and the neighboring state senator for 10 years. I've been trying to serve the city of Riverside, Village of Riverside, for the last year, even before the primary and after the primary, and continuing on through the summer and fall. And I do it because it's the right thing to do. And, you know, I've had the good pleasure of meeting a number of your city councilmen, led by President Gorman. I will tell you that over the last six months, I talk more to President Gorman than I do sometimes my wife and my spouse. He has been tenacious over projects like, you know, the river and the pond, and as well as this current project. I'd like to give kudos out to village manager, Scolera, and my partners in crime. I've learned that one of your councilmen is from my old neighborhood, back of the yards, trustee Sachi.
I'm not from there, just my special friends.
Special friends and ancestry are from the old neighborhood and back of the yards, and trustee Reynolds. I will tell you that because of the tenacity of President Gorman and this administration, we've been able to do a number of interventions to maintain and improve the quality of life of the people of Riverside. And that is going to be, I know it's been a hallmark of President Gorman and this administration and all of you, the trustees, but it's with a lot of pride to be able to put this sign up. You know, signage is important. It means a lot to the people of Riverside, and it talks about the spirit, the historic presence of Riverside, the Olmsted community. And just the thought of the attempts by many other legislators in the past to get a sign up with not a lot of luck means a lot to me. I like the challenge, and when they tell me it can't be done, you know, I prefer it that way sometimes, because it brings a lot of motivation and makes you dig real deep to get things done. This sign is a tribute to the goodwill and the people of the Village of Riverside, and I am glad to now be associated, and I look forward to more signage along Harlem Avenue and anywhere you'd like them, as well as other signage. I have the dubious distinction of also being the chairman of the Transportation Committee in the Illinois Senate, so I'm going to work wholeheartedly with President Colleton and our governor, Pat Quinn, to bring about greater good for the Village of Riverside. Thank you.
Any questions for the senator?
I've mentioned your situation before. Senator Sandoval is running in the general election in November. He's unopposed, so he will become our state senator in January. We have a real good group of state senators and state representatives. However, I do have to echo what you have said. Sometimes I sit back and say, geez, he doesn't even represent us yet, and look at all the time he's put into this. He knows it's the right thing to do. He knows you have to be an advocate for a good community and good elected officials, and I appreciate your effort. I won't necessarily talk out of school here, but when I've talked to him about the sign and I explained to him why we can't get the sign, and let me tell you, that sign, I'm shocked that it's there. His comment to me was, let's change the rules. And that's not exactly what he meant, but the point is, you have to speak up and you have to advocate, and he's done that for us. The board knows, and our residents know, because it's been reported in the newspaper. Senator Sandoval has played an instrumental role in helping us achieve some of the success with the Swan Pond and Hoffman Dam project. He has spoke up directly with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources for us, so we appreciate his efforts, and on behalf of the village board, we look forward to working with you now, when you're not yet our senator, and in the future when you are our senator. Trustee Reynolds?
Senator, I personally want to thank you because you've made my job easier, dealing with the Army Corps and the IDNR. And as trustee Sachi can verify, we've had times when we were at loggerheads with them, and we just needed to get them to see our point of view, and especially the point of view from some of our residents in terms of tree loss that was prevented. And also in getting them to see certain things in a certain way. We were remarking this morning when we were traveling through Punch List down in Swan Pond about some of the impediments that we were flatly told could not be done, and yet here they are, and the proof is in the pudding. So I personally want to thank you so much for your intervention on our behalf.
The way this discussion all started was the senator actually came out to Riverside to personally see what was going on with Swan Pond and the dam removal project. And so we happened to work this little extra.
I never realized that I'd be dragged into the Swan Pond, literally, or me asked for signage, but it's a welcome.
I always say, and all of our residents always say, we're special. Every community feels they're special, so I understand that, but we're special. And what the senator has always said to me is, you guys are special. There's not another community in Cook County that has this designation, border to border. It's not just one street, not one house, our national landmark says. He's helped us, he has helped us, he'll continue to help us promote that. So thank you, Senator.
President Gorman, I'd just like to close, and the trustees, you know, in my other district, in the last remap, many of the municipalities have had a number of legislators. For example, Berwyn, that if I've represented the last 10 years, they've had, they went from, in the last remap, from like, you know, two legislators, a senator and a state rep, to like, six or seven. And many municipalities have had the same experience. You in the new remap will have, I believe, three senators, two senators.
Three reps, two senators.
Three reps and two senators. I look forward, then, by the time this is all over, Riverside people say, we have one senator, that's Marty Sandoval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Sandoval.
Okay, we shall move on. Thank you, Peter. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anybody who would like to address the board at this time?
Good evening. Gint, Leotuveninkas, 265 Northwood Road. I'm here on behalf of the Frederick Law Olmsted Society of Riverside to share with you our recent activities and upcoming events. Our next landscape workday will take place on November 10th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon. It'll take place on Long Common at Big Ball Park. As always, we invite all residents to come join us in maintaining our beautiful landscape in the village. Our last walking tour of the season will take place at the end of this month, on October 28th. It'll be of the south section of the village. It takes two hours and it starts at 2:00 p.m. We gather at the Riverside train station. The cost of the tour is $10, $7 for members of the Olmsted Society and for seniors. The proceeds go toward landscape preservation, educational programs, and architectural restoration in Riverside. The Olmsted Society has been co-sponsoring a lecture series together with the library this year, and our next installment will be on Sunday, December 9th, at 2:00 o'clock at the library, entitled World's Fairs, World's Fairs Gardens. This will be presented by Kathy Maloney, who is also a member of the Olmsted Society, who's written a book on the subject, and she'll be presenting and describing the gardens and landscapes of U.S. World's Fairs from 1870 through 1940, and the influence that they had on public green space and private gardens. So we invite everyone to come join and learn more about that subject. There'll be books on sale, as well as a book signing by the author. Then lastly, I just wanted to mention, I mentioned earlier, proceeds that we get from walking tours, and we also obviously get money from our memberships and events like our house walks and things, and we try and make use of that money. One of the things that we did at our last board meeting last month, we were approached by a young resident, an Eagle Scout candidate, looking for funding for his Eagle Scout project. His project is to build wood duck nests, nest boxes. He is trying to increase the population of wood ducks in the area, and this project is going to cost him about $500 in materials. And the society voted to allocate $250 toward his project. So that is kind of an example of some of the things that we try to do in help supporting conservation and other things in our village. So with that, I bid you a good evening.
Thank you, Gint.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else I'd like to address the board at this time? If not, we shall continue on. Next up, reports of village officers, village president's report. Since our last board meeting, which was on October 1st, I've attended two CMAP, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning meetings, a regional coordinating committee meeting, and the Board of Directors meeting. October is the two-year anniversary of the adoption of CMAP's GoTo2040 Plan, which is the plan for northeastern Illinois. It is also the seventh anniversary of the creation of the CMAP Board of Directors by the State of Illinois Legislature, and I've had the honor of serving on that board since January of 2011. At that board meeting, we focused on progress made in implementing the GoTo2040 Plan and a discussion on strategic steps regarding transportation projects. At that meeting, the board approved the staff recommendation to advance performance-based funding for transportation projects in Illinois by requesting that IDOT form a technical advisory group to move this forward, and that CMAP should initiate a regional process for developing the agency's internal prioritization and selection methodology to evaluate candidate projects. Now, why do I take time to mention that, a long mouthful of transportation words? Because what all that talks about is basically motor fuel tax funds. Motor fuel tax funds have been allocated historically in the state of Illinois on a rigid formula, 55% downstate, 45% to metropolitan Chicago. Metropolitan Chicago drives the economy of the entire state of Illinois. Metropolitan Chicago produces the lion's share, something like 70% of motor fuel tax funds, produces the lion's share of income tax for the state of Illinois. But yet, the metropolitan Chicago receives a smaller share of motor fuel tax funds and other transportation dollars. Now, those dollars are to benefit the entire state, and that is important, but it's also necessary to recognize that if you don't support the infrastructure in Chicago, the entire state will suffer. And I don't mean Chicago, but metropolitan Chicago, the entire state will suffer. So this initiative here is a step in trying to move away from a rigid formula-based allocation of motor fuel tax funds to a formula based on project need. So it's a very worthwhile project, and CMAP has been working on this for a period of time and hoping to move it forward. Also at that meeting, CMAP approved the next round of local technical assistance grants. After receiving 100 proposals, CMAP has granted 46 more projects, and that's in addition to the 60 projects that are currently underway, and 15 of those are completed. And that's one of those projects that is underway, is our project here in Riverside. I also attended the Cook County Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Town Hall meeting, along with Fire Chief Kamura. The purpose of that meeting was for the Cook County Department of Homeland Security to let municipalities know the resources that are available to us in times of need, and also training resources and other. Michael Masters, who is the director of this department that was brought in by President Preckwinkle, is really seeming to do a really great job in getting out there, and his goal is to help municipalities. And it's our job to make sure we turn to him for that help, and I know Chief Kamura and Chief Whitesel do exactly that. So with that, that concludes my report, and I will turn to village manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. President. All I have are two items. The first is to provide the board, as well as the community, an update on the Hoffman Dam-Swan Pond project. They are working feverishly to complete the projects and anticipate completion of both at the end of this week. The asphalt path is in place. They've done the hydromulching, and today they were planting the trees. They've done all of the clearing. There are still a couple of items that are still outstanding that trustee Reynolds and Sachi, along with village staff, are working to resolve, and hopefully will be resolved by the end of the week as well. As I told our village forester and our public works director when we were down there and we were talking about it, I'm very pleased with the outcome, as will the residents of the village, not only when you're walking the path, but even from the top, right by the library, when you now look across the river, you can actually see into Swan Pond, where as before, it was blocked by a bunch of trees, so invasives, my apologies. But it does look very nice, and everyone will be happy. My other i-
Nice question.
Sure.
Just to clarify, when you say they're going to complete, there's still work to be done next year.
Yes. Well, I mean, complete as far as most of the heavy items have been resolved. The next year, we'll come back and do some plantings that-
Spring plantings have to be done along both sides of the river-
Of the river, right.
In the dam vicinity.
Right. The reason why they can't do that now is we're getting to that time of year where it's kind of iffy, and they don't want to take the chance, and the plant materials will have a better chance of surviving if they're planted in early spring. And so that's why that's the delay, excuse me. The other item that I have is just an acknowledgement of village staff that it's unfortunate that emergency situations are when you get to see the best in people, and I want to publicly acknowledge Chief Whitesel, Deputy Chief Kroll, Sergeant Kroll, Officer Navarro, Officer Miller, Officer Simpson, Deputy Chief Buckley, Captain Sherman, and all of the FD personnel who assisted with the pedestrian and train fatality that we had here last week. It was amazing to see the cooperation between the departments, the railroad, as well as the railroad police, in getting the matter resolved, respecting the person that had the accident, and following the proper procedures to ensure that the item was addressed properly. So I just wanted to acknowledge the efforts of those individuals for their hard work, and that is all I have.
Thank you, Peter. Village attorney Lance Molina.
Hi, Detective.
Thank you, Lance. We shall move on then to the approval of the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this evening is the approval of the bills of October 15th, 2012, approved village board of trustees, executive session meeting minutes of September 17, 2012, and executive session meeting minutes of October 1st, 2012, approved village board of trustees, regular meeting minutes of September 17, 2012, approved village board trustees, special budget meeting minutes of September 25th, 2012, and the regular meeting minutes of October 1st, 2012. And lastly, to file and review Economic Development Commission meeting minutes of September 6th, 2012. Does any trustee require an item to be removed for further discussion? If not, then I will ask for a motion and a second on the consent agenda.
So move.
So a motion by trustee Shevitz and a second by trustee Reynolds. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sells.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Bell.
Aye.
Thank you, and the motion is adopted. We shall continue on with the agenda. First up, the reports of board chairpersons, Public Works, Transportation Utilities, trustee Sells.
Before I get to the agenda item, I wanted to go back to the village manager for a second. And I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to talk to you about this before the meeting, but I've been reading on some of the local blogs, and I've also had a couple of residents contact me about phone calls that people are getting with regard to electrical usage. Apparently, there's one group that's operating under numerous telephone numbers that are calling our residents, trying to get them to switch, and our residents are calling back, they're getting recorded messages. And I was just, have you, are you aware of this? Have people been contacting you about this?
I've only received a call from one individual in regards to this, and as I've told that person, we cannot ask, it's kind of like any other telemarketer. We have stressed to residents to be Larry, and we've gotten the information out that Direct Energy is our provider, but what I've told this individual, luckily, they did not make the switch. But we have been working with NYMEC, and NYMEC is working with our residents because there were incidences where one of the other competitors was going door-to-door and had people sign a form that basically transferred them over. And NYMEC has been working with those residents who have called, at least, that we are aware of, to work with them, to bring them back to the Direct Energy. So we have contacted Direct Energy. They are also aware of the situation, and they have also said that if a resident contacts them, they will work with them to make the transfer back to Direct Energy. As well as, I have reached out to the one company that was going door-to-door, and that company has told me that they have instructed all of their Illinois people to not come to Riverside and solicit in Riverside.
I mean, I just think it's important, I mean, this electrical aggregation is such a good thing, but it also put a lot of sharks in the water. And, you know, I just think it's imperative that our residents understand that this decision has been made by the board for Direct Energy, and that if they didn't opt out and decide to keep ComEd, or if they haven't already chosen another provider, their provider is Direct Energy.
Correct.
And if they get these kind of calls, or these kind of people come to their door, if they have questions, they should contact you or our village staff about this.
Correct.
So that's the first thing. The second thing is another happier note. On October 7th, we had the grand opening of our bicycle routes here in town, and we had over 100 cyclists show up. Some actually rode their bikes down from Oak Park to take part in the event. And so it was a big success, and there were a number of people that made it possible. And one person who doesn't get thanked really enough for everything that she does is Kathy Haley, our village manager. Kathy is the one who reached out to the Active Transportation Alliance, and that spread the word for this, and got a lot of people to come from the surrounding region to the bike opening. And she also got Dan's Bike Shop to come, and so Dan's Bike Shop was here doing bicycle checks. So Kathy, thank you for doing that. And of course, I think everybody already knows the story, that was really the Riverside Cycling Club and the Riverside Sustainability Council that pushed these routes through. So it was very needed, the sun came out as if on cue for the ride to start, and so everybody made it around town safe and sound. So thank you to everybody that came out on October 7th. So now to the business at hand here. I have a second reading of an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 18, Section 318.2, a tax on use or consumption of electricity of the Village of Riverside. Illinois Statute 811.2 of the Illinois Municipal Code provides a municipality the authority to collect a tax from those consuming electricity within the corporate limits of Riverside. The tax billed residents for electric is dependent upon their usage, not a percentage of the total cost of an individual bill. The tiered rates are based on the consumption of kilowatt-hours used within a given month. Due to the rate being based on usage, tax receipts have seasonal variability as well. In the summer months, electric utility tax increases based on air conditioner usage, while in the cooler months, consumption decreases. As residents begin to transition to green technologies currently available and changes to behaviors to be green, the village can presume that the revenue derived from the electric utility tax will begin to decrease as well. Electric utility taxes are billed and collected by ComEd, then remitted to the village on the 20th of every month for the prior month's billing. Prior to 2009, the electric utility tax rates were capped. Currently, the Illinois Municipal Code allows the village to adjust the current rates to the maximum, which varies based on the respective kilowatt usage per month tier. However, on average, the increase is 5.37%. These rates were previously adjusted by the village in 2004. The ordinance before us tonight would increase the village's current electric utility tax on average by 5.37%. So that is what's before us tonight. I oppose this ordinance, so I will allow someone else to make the motion.
I will move to pass the second reading of this ordinance, the menu, Title III, Chapter 18, Section 318.2, tax or use of consumption of electricity, Village of Riverside, Illinois Municipal Code.
So we have a motion by trustee Shevitz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Reynolds. Is there any further discussion? This is the second- This is the second reading, we discussed this in our last meeting also. Any further discussion?
The other thing I would say is that, you know, when we went through the electrical aggregation, one of the options we had with regard to setting the aggregate rates was to basically add what in essence would have been a service charge to the aggregate rates. And we decided not to do that because we wanted to pass the maximum amount of savings along to our residents. I don't see any distinction between that and this, which is why I oppose it.
Anything further? If not, we have motion and a second, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Salz.
No.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Chevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sett.
Aye.
Trustee Bell.
No.
Do we need a fourth vote?
Correct.
So this motion fails. Is there anything further in your report, trustee Salz?
That's all I have, thank you.
Next up, Public Safety, Health, and Landscape, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have before you the second reading of an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois, relative to ambulance service fees. The current ambulance billing fee schedule does not reflect current market value for service delivery of emergency medical services. The fire department recently gathered and reviewed ambulance billing fee schedule data from neighboring municipalities located near the Village of Riverside. As a result of this research, the current ambulance billing fee schedule needs to be adjusted to reflect current market value for the delivery of paramedic-level services to the community. The proposed change to the ambulance billing fee schedule is considered to be a better reflection of the current market. At the Village of Riverside Board Meeting on October 1st, 2012, the Village Board of Trustees discussed the proposed ambulance billing fee schedule. During this discussion, the board decided to keep resident ambulance billing fee increases to a minimum. As a result, the board directed the village manager and fire chief to readjust the proposed ambulance billing fee schedule to reflect minimal increases to the resident rates and present these proposed changes at the October 15th, 2012 Board Meeting. So I move that we adopt the attached ordinance to adjust the ambulance billing fee schedule to be implemented on January 1st, 2013.
Second. So a motion by trustee Reynolds, and a second by trustee Chevitz. This again is a second reading also of an ordinance. As discussed at our last meeting, some changes have been made. Is there any further discussion of what is before us?
You know, at the last meeting, I made a point that I thought that it was beneficial to our residents since we, and it happened to be at that last meeting, we awarded a $450,000 contract for our paramedic service. Last year, we bought a half a million dollar ambulance, so the residents paid quite a bit for this service. And I wanted to keep the increase as minimal as possible and the non-resident increase to go up to cover that. And I appreciate what you did, but I do see still that the advanced life support number one, which is the largest used by our residents, you know, went up 20%. You know, I was still a little like that to be more in line with the, you know, the $50 or to point rather than $150 and, you know, kicked up the non-residents to cover that differences, because the ALS-1 for non-residents is almost as many calls as ALS-1 for residents. I think there could have been a way that we could have massaged that a little bit more. That's what I would have liked, that's what I would have liked to see. I mean, I'm not gonna-
Well, I mean, why wouldn't you just ask to have a change now?
I'll ask.
I would, I mean, that makes sense to me, I'd rather see the ALS resident, I mean, if you think 50 is appropriate, Joe, and, you know, I'm fine with going from 850 to 750, and we can boost the ALS non-resident up another $100 just to offset that if we're talking about it's apples to apples. I mean, even the ALS non-resident at 1,200 rather than 1,100 puts us kind of near the middle, or, you know, near the upper echelon, but certainly not the highest among those, so, you know, why not?
I mean, there are obviously different ways you could get to the same amount. I mean, if we held our residents flat, for example, you could just raise the basic life support non-residents to 1,050. But rather than getting into actually putting dollars to it, what I would suggest, since we're supposed to be the policymaker, is just to say, we want a structure that keeps our residents with no increase, and then let staff determine how best to split up the cost among the non-residents, basic life support, and advanced life support.
Yeah, I thought that's what we discussed at the last meeting as well, too.
See, that's what I was suggesting.
I don't believe we discussed no increase.
That's what I discussed, I don't know if we discussed that.
I think if you go back and you can clarify for me, the direction the staff was to limit the increase to residents.
I don't, I mean, I agree, Joe, I mean, the-
And the name is right amongst what we decided at this meeting.
So I guess the question is, what direction does the consent to the board want to give staff? Do we want to vote on this?
Because I think Joe's point's well taken. I mean, our residents have already paid for the ambulance and paramedic contracts, so that's the rationale of holding our residents steady and adjusting the non-resident costs. So that's what I was suggesting, is hold it flat and let staff-
Why don't you make a motion that states that?
You have a motion and a second on the floor right now, so can that be amended, or-
Yeah, my consensus, for me, it's a small enough board where we don't need to do amendment motions with priority, if everyone agrees, we're gonna-
So that's my suggestion, is that we hold the resident rates consistent, and then we adjust the non-resident rates to generate the necessary income.
The same income as proposed.
Yes.
So we have a revision to the motion that was on the floor by trustee Salz. Is there a second to that?
Second.
The second by trustee Bell. Is there any discussion on the proposal that's currently on the floor? If not, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Salz.
And this is on the amendment, correct?
This is the amended.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Chevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sett.
Aye.
Trustee Bell.
Aye.
Thank you, and that is-
What, go ahead.
That is adopted, so this amendment, this will go back to staff to further revise this and present this to the board at, hopefully, at our upcoming meeting.
Right, it can be put on the consent agenda if everyone's okay with it, but it will need to come back because you do need to vote on specific numbers, so.
Yes.
But it can be part of the consent agenda.
Yeah, because it's an ordinance, so we have to see the exact numbers. I guess I don't, I would prefer to see it and not have it on the consent agenda, so I would prefer this to be on the agenda.
Oh, that's fine, I'm just saying, it does need to come back, however you want it.
Clear on that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Trustee Salz, or trustee Reynolds, you were up, right?
Yes. You have before you now a resolution authorizing the village manager to declare a surplus, a seized 2003 Ford Taurus, and authorize the village manager to auction this vehicle via iBid. The village has declared various seized vehicles as surplus property. Seized vehicle, a 2003 Ford Taurus four-door, VIN number 1FAFP53273G210130, has 142,222 miles, is in fair to good condition, and was awarded to the Village of Riverside Police Department pursuant to an Article 36 filing, and needs to be auctioned in accordance with State of Illinois statute. The board has also entered into an inter-agency agreement with the state to use the state's online auction, iBid, to auction surplus property, and to date, made over $25,000 in sales. The police department routinely files vehicle seizure paperwork in accordance with the State of Illinois statute. Most seized vehicles are turned over to the Cook County Sheriff's Department for disposal as scrap material. Seized vehicles deemed to have some resale value are auctioned by the police department with any proceeds deposited per State of Illinois statute. The maintenance history of this seized vehicle is unknown, there's no alternative use for this seized vehicle, and disposal of this vehicle will clear space, and the police department plans to place this vehicle up for auction on iBid. So I move that we approve the resolution declaring the 2003 Ford Taurus four-door as surplus property.
Second. Motion by trustee Reynolds, and a second by trustee Chevitz. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, who would you please call the roll?
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Chevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sett.
Aye.
Trustee Bell.
Aye.
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted. Trustee Reynolds?
The next is a resolution authorizing the village manager to enter into an agreement with Essential Equipment Solutions for the purchase of personal protective equipment in the amount of $16,080. The fire department has identified one manufacturer for the replacement of personal protective equipment, PPE, that includes bunker coats and bunker pants for structural firefighting protection of the firefighters. Each firefighter, according to the NFPA Standard 1851, is custom-sized by the manufacturer to ensure a good fit that is vital for the proper protection of the wearer. The life expectancy of firefighting personal protective equipment, according to NFPA 1851, is five years. The Riverside Fire Department replaces gear every eight to 10 years. The fire department is requesting to replace eight sets of PPE. The department has identified one manufacturer, Lion Firefighting Apparel, that best meets the needs of our organization. Essential Equipment Solutions is the sole vendor for Lion firefighting apparel in our area. We have negotiated the best price for eight sets of PPE, and the proposed total purchase price is $16,080. So I move that we approve this resolution.
Trustee, if I could just point out, because this item is an expenditure over $10,000, our code does require that you would, the board would need to waive the competitive bid in order to accept this price, which leads me to another item which I'd like to bring up for the board to consider and if the board is okay with. The state statute has the RFP requirements at $20,000 for items, and our ordinance currently has $10,000, which is, in this day and time, is difficult and kind of slows a lot of the process and actually is a little bit more costlier for the village to go out to RFP to get bids for items that are just barely over the $10,000 threshold. So if the board would consider considering at a later meeting, raising that to $20,000 to comply or meet the standard that is provided by the state, then staff and the village attorneys, because we did discuss this today, we would be happy to bring that back to the board to consider.
So that would be on a future agenda, correct?
Right, what has happened is the Illinois statutes, the municipal code, or any of the statutes, used to require a formal bidding, and you have to distinguish between formal requests for bid and requests for proposals. Requests for proposals were done here, but it wasn't a formal statutory process with publication and so forth. You probably would have ended up wanting to waive bids, formal bids on this anyway, because you had identified a specific kind of company you wanted the material from, and you just wanted to get the best price for it, so it's not your standard bidding situation anyway. But what staff, what happened is, a number of years ago, the Illinois statutes were amended to reflect the constant inflationary movement of prices, and the bidding requirement for formal bidding was raised from $10,000 to $20,000, although municipalities can self-impose more stringent bidding requirements, and that's what you currently find yourselves in. So I hope that's not too complicated, it's a number of things, you know, to say, you may want to raise it to give staff more flexibility, you still have to vote on everything. The question is, do you need to go through a formal bidding process or wait, have a motion to waive formal bidding each time, or do you want to eliminate that requirement? You could still, on a case-by-case basis, question staff whether they looked hard enough or whether they maybe want them to go out for bid if you're not happy with what came back. It would still have to come before you for a bid, but you would not be under the formal bidding requirement statutorily or under your code for every contract.
So can I amend my motion to waive competitive bidding for this particular instance?
Yeah, and that would be appropriate here because of your municipal code. Not required by state statute here, but your home code would require it, so in order to avoid violating your code, the motion should include waiving competitive-
All right, then I will amend my motion to waive competitive bidding.
Okay, so we have the same motion and second for this resolution, and it includes the provision to waive competitive bidding. Is there any discussion on this particular resolution?
Just to highlight what Lance said in passing, just so the residents are clear, I mean, we did do RFPs for this, and we received three potential bids, and we chose the lowest one.
Correct, that's why it's very important to be careful. People sometimes use RFP and bidding interchangeably, and they're not, although in a common sense way, they serve the same purpose. You try to get the best price by getting competitive proposals.
So if there's no further discussion on this particular resolution, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Salz.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Chevitz.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Trustee Bell.
This resolution is adopted. Village Manager Claire brought up the question of whether the board would like to consider raising the competitive bid limit from $10,000 to $20,000. Is there a sense of-
Sure.
Yes.
What the board would like to see here? Why don't you consider that direction to bring that back to the ordinance amending.
What we'll do is prepare it so it's no more stringent than what state law requires, and then you can look at that and see what you think.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Next up, Finance, Personnel, and Preservation, trustee Sachi, if you don't have a problem, we have a couple visitors in the audience here.
Yes, I will move that up.
In reverse order here.
Correct. So what I have this evening is a discussion item and two resolutions, and I'm going to take the third item, which is the second resolution, which is a resolution to approve, a proposal to provide professional audit services for the village from Lauterbach and Amen LLP for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2012, through fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016. So previously, the village board approved contracts with Sickich LLP in 1998, 2002, and an extension of those contracts for 2005 and 2006, and for fiscal years 2007 through 11. So Sickich LLP was the village's auditor from 1998 through July of 2012. And you have on your agenda item a five-year history of the costs involved, and Sickich last completed the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation Police Pension filing for fiscal year 2007, filed in 2008. The audit for fiscal years 2010 and 11 required single audit fieldwork, however, a report was only required for fiscal year 2010. For fiscal years 2008 through 11, the filing services were provided: an audit and comprehensive annual financial report for the village, which included the library as a component unit of the village, the library did not receive a separate report on that, and the audit for the library, the village management letter, the single audit for 2010 and 11, and the annual financial report to the state comptroller. In July of 2012, staff published a request for proposal for professional audit services for fiscal years 2012 through 16, and provided the request for proposal to nine different firms. Firms were to provide a cost summary proposal for the filing services: audit and comprehensive annual financial report for the village, audit and annual financial report for the library, the village management letter, the single audit report, the annual financial report to the state comptroller, the review of pension fund annual reports, and the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation Police Pension filings. Four proposals were received from qualified firms. The total hours to be spent on the audit, as quoted by these four firms, ranged from 200 to 300 hours. Of these four firms, the base fee for proposal provided by Lauterbach and Amen LLP was the lowest, however, their staff will spend 275 hours on the Village of Riverside's audit. Despite increasing the scope of services provided by the auditor, the village, the library, and the police pension fund will experience a cost savings as a whole. And you have attached to the resolution, Lauterbach and Amen's, which is staff recommendations firm that we employ, you have their proposal attached here. And if there are any questions, I believe Ron Amen from Lauterbach and Amen is here to answer any questions that the board may have.
If I might invite Mr. Amen to please step up and address the board, just tell us a little bit about your firm prior to our formally entertaining this.
Good evening. I'm Ron Amen, I'm one of the founding partners with Lauterbach and Amen. Our firm- Our firm was founded sixteen years ago by me and my business partner, Sherry Lauterbach, with the principles that we're going to provide quality service to just local governments. And sixteen years later, that's exactly what we still do today. We work with over four hundred units of government in Illinois. About fifty of those are audits of municipalities, which is why I'm here tonight. So we still live with those principles of quality and service to local governments and want to continue that into the future of maintaining that as our firm space.
Any questions for Mr. Amen while he's up here?
If there's not, then I move that the board approve the resolution to approve Lauterbach and Amen's proposal to provide professional audit services for fiscal years 2012, ending December thirty-first, 2016.
Second. So a motion by Trustee Satchi is second by Trustee Valerie. Is there any discussion? I have a question. Your proposal provides hours that you're going to expend on this project and rates and so forth when it comes up with the base cost for the audit. Is that the cost? Is it a fixed fee?
Right. It is a fixed fee, and the hours obviously will fluctuate from what we don't know today to what we'll know in the future, and it can fluctuate year to year based on some of the needs that the village may have as we go through the audit process. It happens with all of our clients. In sixteen years, I can tell you, we've never changed our quota fee. We won't come back to you with new Gatsby's, those governmental accounting standards boards that sometime change what we're trying to do. Our firm also does a lot of things related to those SASEs, they're called Statement on Auditing Standards, and those change over time. Our firm's philosophy is never to bill a client for any of that stuff. So hours can fluctuate, but the fee is a fixed fee from here going forward for the next five years.
In addition to your proposal being the low bid of the firms who did bid, our village staff, our finance director, our village manager recommend the quality of your firm also, so I just wanted to make the point of saying that. So with that, if there is nothing further, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sal.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchi.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted. We look forward to working with you and your firm on this year's audit and the audits in the years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, since we're going backwards, I'll take the other resolution, which is a resolution to authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with Municipal Collection Services Incorporated to facilitate collection operations for the Riverside Police Department and the Village of Riverside. In nineteen ninety-six, the police department implemented a parking adjudication system and entered into an agreement with Municipal Collection Services Incorporated of Payless Heights, Illinois, to perform collection functions for our citations that transfer to their company. MCSI collects these debts due to the Village of Riverside. In January 2011, the village board approved an amendment to the nineteen ninety-six contract, which lowered the commission received by MCSI from forty percent to thirty-five percent, and updated collection division to reflect the removal of RMI, a subcontract previously utilized by MCSI. On May first, 2012, staff provided ninety-day notice to MCSI for the cancellation of the nineteen ninety-six contract. The cancellation was not due to the level of service being received, but due to the age of the contract and the recent undertaking of the local debt recovery program. Staff has discussed with MCSI the objectives of both collections and the local debt recovery program, differentiation between the collection commission on both items, and services to be provided as a whole by MCSI. In late September, MCSI provided a revised contract to the village. As part of this contract, MCSI will actively pursue the collection of outstanding debts, perform weekly updates to the Illinois Office of the Comptroller, and update payments made to MCSI and the Illinois Office of the Comptroller in the Village Citation Software MSI. MCSI will receive a thirty-one percent commission on all items collected, except for items collected through the local debt recovery program, which will have a separate commission rate of fifteen percent. And I believe that a representative from MCSI is here to address any questions that the board may have. If you will step up, please, and introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Dan McDonald. I'm with MCSI. I'm the sales manager, and be happy to address any questions for you.
We'll just comment that that local debt recovery program is a new state initiative by the comptroller's office, and that's part of the reason also for this revision and the double commission rate, so.
Right, certainly. And I can explain a little bit about the local debt recovery program for anyone who is not familiar with it, but basically it allows debts to be submitted from a municipality to the state, and should a individual request a tax refund, and they have a refund coming, these debts can be offset through tax refunds. That is the majority of the revenue stream that a municipality would see. There's also state contracts, state employees, lottery winnings, but seventy-five to eighty percent of the revenue would come during your typical tax season. When this program was introduced, we felt it was beneficial to embrace it rather than fight it, because if you have these debts that are submitted December one or January one, they could be very active, and they could get resolved by the state. However, after the tax season, those debts could sit dormant for nine months. So it's really a two-pronged approach. We will continue to work those debts throughout the year, and we may collect on some of those debts, partial payments, you know, the collection industry is kind of a tough industry to be in today because the economy is certainly struggling. The hammer that we had putting it on somebody's credit sometimes really has very little effect to people because it's kind of a get-in-line, my credit's already shot. So this program really does work well in the sense that when debts are submitted, the average tax refund is about two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars. We service over sixty municipalities. Many of the debts that are submitted are well in excess of that. They can be a thousand, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollars. So if they were only going to be resolved by the state program, you would be waiting several years in order to get your money. So that does provide some leverage for us as a collection agency, because not only does it take, would it take multiple years to get that debt resolved, each time, there's a fifteen-dollar transaction fee that's added on by the state. So the debtor's going to pay the debt in full, and they're going to pay fifteen dollars on every transaction. So that gives us an opportunity to discuss a settlement, which in all of our collection contracts, including with the village, there is a settlement percentage that allows us some leeway to be able to resolve these tickets. So if we can resolve it with eighty percent, and they can save the fifteen-dollar transaction fee, sometimes that gives us a bit of a negotiating component. But ultimately, these debts are going to be submitted to the state, and they have to be updated every week, and there are multiple file formats, so it's not a, I don't want to say it's a complex program, but it does take a fair amount of technical expertise. We wrote the programs to be able to manage the debt. However, we recently partnered with a company, Excel Technologies, and they are a data mining company. And what that provided was us to still offer the same rate, but provide a better match rate with the state by going through the data and looking and refining the data, so when it has mismatches on names and addresses, it can work that data back and get a better match rate. So I believe El Crow Village was one that submitted their data on their own, their technical person, and got a fifteen percent match rate. Because the village of Riverside and many of the other villages are using the MSI software, which is our sister company, for the ticketing, the data is formatted in a certain way, so we get a little bit better match rate. We were able to get thirty percent for a couple municipalities. Excel was able to get a forty-nine percent match rate for Berwind, so clearly they have the technology to be able to get a better match rate. That better match rate equates to a higher return to the village. So we tied it all together, though. So we have the collection side, we have the Excel Technology side, which provides a better match rate, and then that's all linked back into your MSI software. So as payments are made, we update your data records, and ultimately, we're providing savings in data entry time on your ticketing software, a two-pronged approach in your collection side, and which should equate to a higher return for the municipality.
Then I am going to move that the board approve the resolution, which we have attached as the agenda item, which will enter us into an agreement with MCSI to perform collection functions of our past due citations and assist in the implementation of the local debt recovery program that's offered by the state comptroller's office.
Second. So a motion by Trustee Satchi is second by Trustee Shavitz. Is there any further discussion? Mr. McDonald, just to clarify for me, if a debt is submitted to your firm for collection that's subject to the thirty-one percent commission rate, if you then subsequently collect that debt through the comptroller's debt recovery program, the commission rate on that debt is then fifteen percent.
That's correct.
So irrespective of any other work you may have done on that, your rate then drops to the fifteen percent that's collected through that.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just one question, procedural question. Lance Disagreement provides for signature by the village president, and the resolution provides for signature by the village manager?
It should be the village president.
Yeah, we should fix that. It depends on what.
So we can just make that technical correction? So it'll be signed by the village manager?
No. It's by the village president.
So then the resolution will be amended to read the signature by the village president?
Correct.
Okay. So we have the motion and the second on the floor. With that change? With this change. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Sal.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Shavitz.
Aye.
Trustee Satchi.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Thank you, and that resolution is adopted, and thank you, Mr. McDonald and your firm, for working with us on this important initiative for the village. Trustee Satchi?
Yes. Last item is a discussion item, which is a discussion of fiscal year twenty thirteen budget of the Riverside Museum. At the September budget workshop, staff presented a balanced budget. The village board reviewed and discussed many of the adjustments within the budget. A majority of the village board requested that staff add back to the budget ten thousand five hundred dollars in public works building maintenance. As part of the discussion, the village board had questions regarding the historical commission's budget, fundraising, and donations. The village board requested clarification regarding how fundraising efforts are funded and changes for the commission's budget as presented. And since then, staff has evaluated the historic commission's request and recommended changes to the commission's budget, and is presenting these items to be discussed this evening by the board. Staff recommends that these changes be incorporated into the fiscal year twenty thirteen budget document, which will be presented at our November meetings. Staff recommends that in addition to the budget request reduction of four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, that all future costs with fundraising and nonrecurring special projects be paid for from the commission's general fund balance assignment of, as of December thirty-first of 2011, stood at seventy-three thousand and seventy-four dollars. Historically, any and all donations made to the museum historical commission were placed in a separate account within the general fund and were not drawn upon. Any fundraising expenses or exhibits that were designed based on the fundraising efforts were paid from the general fund, with all the donations being added to the assignment in the general fund, which now totals that seventy-three thousand and seventy-four dollars. Any museum income or program revenue would be placed in the general fund and was used to pay for the costs associated with the operations of the museum. The most recent historical commission financial report is attached for the board's reference. The museum historical commission has a separate account, and all donations received are deposited and tracked in this account. You have the revenues and expenditures, the latest figures attached, along with some history to it. So personally, I feel that this policy change is a good one, that we should, that we should give our assent to, and I also concur with the reduction in the budget request of seventeen, from the original seventeen thousand to twelve thousand four hundred and fifty.
If I remember correctly, I thought the chairperson of the historical commission was going to be here to explain some of these things.
I don't see the need for it, since she actually, I met with her, and she has given her assent to all these items and to this policy change. Matter of fact, she thought that that's, basically, I think that whole commission, and myself included, thought that this fund, that their budget actually operated sort of as an enterprise fund within the general fund. Well, to our great surprise, it does not, did not operate that way. And so in the future, and some years, some years, the historic commission has contributed to a general fund surplus, and some years, they've detracted from it. It amounts to a few hundred dollars on average every year. So with this new policy, the village continues to support the commission and the museum's activities for their regular operating expenses. But if there's special programs or events, or if they want to run a fundraiser, then they're going to have to spend that money out of that restricted balance, not out of general fund money. That was basically the point, I believe, that you were bringing up and that Mark also commented on at the last board meeting, so.
So what you're saying is that the twelve thousand four hundred and fifty dollars that is put aside for the historical commission, fifty-four hundred dollars and twenty-seven, the two in the yellow highlighter, is going to be taken out of their?
Right.
Their seventy-three thousand dollars.
If they even spend that, if they do that, yes.
So what we will be basically contributing is five hundred dollars for a grant writer if needed, three thousand dollars for brochures, which I don't, what kind of brochures, I don't remember.
That's the, if you've been in the museum in the last few years, you'd see that they have several brochures published on various topics for visitors that wish to take a walking tour, or they have one on education, there's one on the water tower, and some of those brochures need to be updated. So they've been talking actually for a few years about doing that, so. And by the way, since the village is getting a new copier this year, I've explained to them that they might not even need to spend that. We can probably do that all in-house. So that's another item that probably won't get spent, even if they do get around to it. I mean, like I said, they've talked about revising these brochures before, it hadn't gotten to it. So if they do it this year, you know, they should wait until we get that new copier on hand, and we'll be able to do that and reduce the printing cost, not only for the historic museum, but for the village as a whole, with that new, that new copier should save the village. Jessica, I believe we talked that in about five years, it'll have paid for itself, right? Yeah.
So in essence, what's coming out of the general fund is forty-three hundred dollars.
I mean, I was under the impression that somebody from the historical commission was going to be here as well. I mean, that's what we asked for.
That isn't what the whole board asked for.
Well, you know, well, I mean, I think, you know, when we're considering the commission's budget, it would be nice if they could come meet with the entire board and not.
You know, anybody can call them up anytime you want. Her phone number is three one two two five six six five seven three, and ask her anything you want.
And that's the purpose of having meetings, is so we have this discussion from our residents, not in private.
Well, you know, I mean, let's face it, you guys want to just like prosecute her before a board or something for, you know.
Well, I don't know where that came from. So since you're the only person here to answer questions, let me ask you a question.
Why don't you just call her up and ask her if you have a question that I can't answer?
The calendar expense, I thought the calendar was one of their fundraisers, because they sell the calendars, right?
Well, and they sell calendars, they sell ornaments, so that historically has always come out of their budget request. And then the money that's received from it goes back into the general fund, it doesn't go into the restricted fund.
So shouldn't the calendar portion under this new policy be paid out of their seventy-three thousand?
No.
No, only because that's the cost that they, the money that, or the revenue
No, only because that's the cost that they, the money that, or the revenue that is derived from those calendars stays within the general fund, it doesn't go into the seventy-three...
Now, see, that was the other part I don't really understand, because if I understood what trustee Ballerine was saying last time, the thought was that if they derive income from something like the calendars or the ornaments, that that would go, that would inure to their benefit, that it would not go back to the general fund, that it would actually go into the museum's fund. Isn't that what we talked about last time?
Yeah, I would liken, if they have a great calendar sales, great ornament sales, I think they should be able to reap the benefits of those sales.
I thought the discussion was we didn't want to swap general fund dollars for restricted dollars.
We don't.
To fundraising, right?
We don't.
And if I'm hearing this right, reading this right, the three thousand dollars that's going to print the calendar and the brochures, any revenue derived from that will go back to the same fund from which the funding was derived, which is all I care about, is if restricted dollars are going to be generated, then it should come out of the restricted fund. If it's general fund dollars generated, have it come out of the general fund.
And things like calendar and ornament sales, which are regularly recurring things every year, come out of their general fund budget request, and the revenues go back into the general fund, not into the restricted fund.
Jessica, do you want to add something to that?
And then just an add then, only items that are strictly donated, for example, the book sales, the books were actually, they'll pay for the costs out of their donations, but any profit, so to speak, that is derived is going into their donations to build up the donations in the segregated account. So any income that's derived, we have program revenue and we have income from sales. The sales are the ornaments and the calendars. The program revenue is essentially the tours that they do on an ongoing basis, and that goes back into the general fund. Approximately on an annual basis, you're looking at anywhere from fifteen hundred to thirty-five hundred that goes back into the general fund. Fluctuates based on calendar sales, on how many tours they have, and then also on the sale of the ornaments.
That doesn't seem fair to me, to the Historical Commission. I mean, it seems to me that a better way to do it would be to model it kind of along the lines of what the Parks and Rec Department does. I mean, certainly, we want to underwrite the, like, the daily operating expenses, copies, phone, all that kind of thing. But if they generate income from their own efforts, like through ornament sales or from calendars, then that should go into their fund. They should pay for those things out of their fund, and then if they reap a profit from those things, that profit should inure to their benefit.
Yeah, but the difference is that Parks and Rec Department has its own tax level, Historic does not. So that, in my mind, that gets paid out of general tax, a mix of general tax dollars and now their reserves that they have, so.
Well, they do have a tax level, and the tax level is forty-three hundred dollars. I mean, we are giving them money out of the general fund, but this isn't, this is, well, it's still tax dollars. This is not something to, I mean, I think you're thinking that we're trying to hamstring the Historical Commission, and quite frankly, it's completely the opposite. I would like them to be completely, you know, they can, if they want to have, if they have a great ornament sales, great catalog sales, and they spend twenty-five hundred dollars and generate five thousand dollars, I think they should keep the twenty-five hundred.
Well, the idea was that their restricted fund would be donations. So ornament sales are not donations, it's an item that they're, that they are purchasing and reselling. For instance, you know, the book that Commissioner Guardi and I wrote was specified as a donation, we filled out a donation form according to the village's policy, so that specifically would accrue strictly to the restricted fund.
Right, but if you had calendar sales and these ornaments, if you wrapped them together with a fundraising event, the potential of making quite a bit more money for a very minimal investment, if the job is done correctly, I think this is a better deal for the Historical Commission, because then they have the opportunity to double their own money, rather than take two thousand dollars from us and have to give us four thousand dollars back. I would rather them take two thousand dollars from themselves and build their own restricted fund. So they take the risk, but they get the reward.
It's up to the Commission to decide, not us. This is...
It's up to us to decide, because it's right in front of us.
But, you know, to go back to what Mark said, I mean, I think that point is well taken. I mean, the, I mean, yes, the Parks and Rec Department has a tax levy, but the Historical Commission has basically a subsidy, a taxpayer-funded subsidy to underwrite their operations. So, I mean, I understand what this is suggesting, I think what Joe and I are suggesting is there might be a better way, that would be better for the Historical Commission if they were allowed to actually reap the benefits of their efforts. I mean, if they, you know, if they spend, like Joe said, they spend two thousand dollars out of their restricted fund, they make five thousand, they should get that profit back into their restricted fund to use on historical museum projects.
I'm confused here. Two weeks ago, Joe, you brought up the point of swapping general fund dollars for restricted dollars, and Ben, you agreed, and I agreed too. Now, I, it seems like you guys are okay with swapping general fund dollars for restricted dollars. But that's what I'm hearing. What am I missing?
Then you need to slow down and listen.
Rather than being sharp in your comment, I will, let me explain, let me explain my understanding of what he's missing. What my understanding of you're missing is the fact that the expense of producing the calendar or the ornament would come from donated funds. So the revenue goes back, so that eliminates the swap. Is that correct? Say, Joe, is that correct?
Exactly. And then whatever revenue they generate from them, they can put in that restricted fund.
Jessica, can you speak to how it's set up now and kind of clarify what the differences are?
Well, how it's been done for at least the past ten years, essentially, is any fundraising efforts were paid actually from the general fund. I think the intent was that the donations would offset some of the costs bore by the general fund, but that never actually came to fruition. Essentially, as mentioned in the agenda history, it assisted in building up what is essentially now that seventy-three thousand dollars, because even when they did the donation effort, those monies would then be, go in that segregated account strictly for the Historical Commission, and general fund monies would be expended for the exhibits and any of their special fundraisers and things of that sort. So the donations that we received went into that segregated account, but general fund money was still expended.
So one of the proposals that staff has put forward here is to correct that...
Correct.
...imbalance, and that was in reaction to what we talked about last week. The other item here is the reduction in the Historical Commission budget, and I guess that's what we're talking about right now, is should it be further reduced to require that any types of merchandise, I guess we could say, that they want to market, they would have to pay for on their own, and they would be able to keep the revenue, that's what...
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, though, I think it's important to emphasize that, I mean, when you say we're talking about reducing their budget, from my way of thinking, we're actually increasing their revenue.
I meant from the general fund.
Right, no, I understand, but I just want, I want to be clear to folks listening, that what we're talking about is a procedure that by allowing them to actually reap the benefits of their efforts, they would actually be able to build their restricted fund more, instead of having to go back into the general fund, which seems to me is a much fairer and more equitable way of doing things. They make the effort, they get the profit, and then...
Do you want that to go into the restricted fund too?
Yes.
Any revenue that they generate. I mean, I think we should, you know, make sure that the Historical, the Historical Museum is funded and run, because it's an important part of this village. But I'd like to give them the opportunity to be able to build that restricted fund to a point where they may be able to do something, I mean, real big with it. You know, I don't know what it is, I don't know the ideas that they have, but there's going to be a certain point in time where that can grow to a sizable amount, and it already is a sizable amount because of their efforts, because of the efforts of that board and previous boards before. So it's just, I think it's just, and that's why I wanted Judith to be here, was not to harass her, but to understand the printing and binding, how much of the three thousand brochures is actual calendars, how much does she think is actual ornaments, what parts are that, what part is that, you know, what is that moving part? And I don't know that.
The brochure expense was just to revise, they have about five or six brochures, and it's to update and revise those, and that doesn't reflect, the calendar thing is separate on there.
I don't...
Here.
And what is the grant writer part again?
Okay, no, it is in there.
Yeah, I don't see another line on it other than the three thousand.
That thing is...
Yeah, it's all combined, so we don't know what three thousand, if that's three thousand in brochures, or three thousand for calendars, brochures, and ornaments. That's what I would like a little more understanding of, what do they spend in calendars, what do they spend in ornaments, and how do we, how do you break that out?
Ornaments is separate, it is paid out of other supplies. It is not paid out of any type of printing and binding or exhibits and displays.
So the...
It's in a separate account under other supplies.
But the printing and binding is three thousand, that's where the calendars come out of.
Correct.
Okay. So how much of that is calendars? And then the other supplies is, there is no other supplies, it's twenty, is, oh, office supplies is five hundred, is that where the calendars come out of, or where the ornaments come out of?
No.
Because there is no other supplies, other than, other supplies, twenty-seven fifty, which has already been removed.
No, the twenty-seven fifty is still there, that's inclusive of, if you look at historically, what's been spent out of other supplies, that usually is due to the ornaments that are purchased. Even though it's not listed, it's listed as the fundraising event, that item is inclusive of.
So we've already removed the ornaments?
No, they haven't been removed, it was just, the narrative wasn't included.
But that depends on our restricted funds.
The ornaments, it depends on what the direction of the order is.
But that's what the proposal is, is the twenty-seven fifty.
Yeah, you have the twenty-seven fifty here highlighted as it's being completely removed, so is the twenty-seven fifty the fundraising event, or is it twenty-five for the fundraising event, two-hundred-and-fifty for the ornaments?
I do stand corrected. I don't know where she budgeted for the ornaments out of.
What's the, can you just take a step back? So are we discussing the policy here, or are we discussing the specific budget right now? Because we could probably clear up a lot of these questions just by talking about the policy, because it sounds like the discussion is, do we want to keep the policy as it is listed here, or do we want to move to a policy where anything related to any sort of fundraising, be it recurring or nonrecurring, come out of their assignment in the general fund?
And then any revenue derived from that would go into...
Right, it's dollars in, dollars out.
Right.
Right? Okay, so that's, it sounds like that's the major crux of the issue, right?
That's what...
Rather than get bogged down in these budget specifics, as soon as we clear that up.
And they sell.
I think they sell, they produce themselves out of that budget, and they get the revenue from that out of the budget.
Any revenue that they derive, I mean, they go, they do tours, I guess in essence they're selling it more, but that's the same issue.
But what about the grant writer? So how would you deal with the grant writer? So we're spending...
What's that for? What's the grant writer for?
That's, you know, in case they would, I mean, it's not for, I mean, there's various grants that they've discussed applying for. I mean, there was even one a few weeks ago that I had said should be kicked over to them that went to preservation, but, you know, folks, they're not going to get any grants, because in order to get a grant, that museum has to be a lot more professional than it is. You have to have an employee, like, and that's one reason why a few years ago, the previous board hired someone there, and, you know, which, that was discontinued then after a couple of years, when Gary and...
So you're suggesting to take that out then?
I'm not suggesting to take it out, I say, you know, you can leave it in there, but I doubt, that's another thing that I don't expect to get utilized.
You want a grant writer left in the budget?
If they're anticipating utilizing a grant writer in the next year, I would recommend it. I don't like making budget amendments.
For five hundred dollars.
Exactly. If they don't, if realistically they're not anticipating doing it, as I've mentioned to all department heads, don't put it in your budget.
All right, so can I recommend this, that we do a dollars in, dollars out type of policy, where if it's specifically for fundraising efforts, like the calendar, then that comes out of their budget assignment in the general fund, and in addition to the other things that Jessica has highlighted on this sheet in yellow, general operational things are funded as, they have been, just out of the general fund.
Okay, so in other words then, what everyone, does everyone want to, then, for any items that they sell, whether they're recurring or nonrecurring things, should come out of the restricted fund, and the revenues would go into the donation restricted fund?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure why we made it seem to be recurring and nonrecurring.
Including, including not only things they sell, but if they conduct a program which raises revenue, such as a tour.
Yes. Is there a reason, Lonnie, that the word "nonrecurring special projects" was in here, why specifically "nonrecurring" and not just "projects" or "fundraising"?
Yes, because it was to differentiate between projects that they do every year, like a calendar, like the calendar sales...
Okay.
...versus things that they don't do every year, such as a fundraising event.
But the calendar sale is a fundraising event.
In essence, it is, yes.
Okay, all right.
I mean, anything they sell is at a profit.
Mm-hmm.
And charge, and gets charged sales tax to the end user.
Okay.
So is anybody having questions on what trustee Shevitz has just proposed? If not, we have consensus, I trust you agree with that, trustee Sells? Trustee Reynolds? Sachi and Ballerine?
Yeah, that's all good.
So we have consensus to change the accounting policy, if you will, for how these fundraising activities will be accounted for. Now, that still leaves us a question of what is the budget with respect to the general fund?
And we really can't determine that until we get a breakout of the calendar costs and stuff like that. I mean, it's minimal, but...
Well, the budget is the twelve thousand... Four hundred and fifty that is listed right now. Despite us utilizing, we still have to budget the revenue and expense.
Because it's just how much that comes out of the restricted fund.
Correct. At the end of the year is when all the accounting behind the scenes, but we still, for all intensive purposes, have to budget the revenue and expense, and whatever essentially the surplus is at the end of the year with regard to their sales would then be added on to...
Less expenses.
Correct.
Okay.
Less any extraordinary expense, not operating expense.
So the budget for purposes of...
Coming back to us in November will be the numbers that you presented us here, the twelve thousand four hundred.
That is correct.
Everybody in accord with that? Okay, I think that answers the two questions?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So hearing nothing further on that, trustee Sachi, do you have anything else to report?
I do not.
Moving on to River Parks and Recreation, trustee Ballerine?
Just an update on, I think it was August twentieth, Shannon Lang came in front of us about her Girl Scouts Gold Award, the Hundred Trees for a Hundred Years. Before I left on Thursday, I received an email from her, and she was up to a hundred and seven trees. So that's a wonderful progress, and they will start, I believe, start being planted in November. So I, you know, it's wonderful that she did it, and I also, you know, it says a lot about what our employees do, the help from, of course, Peter, the help from the forester, the help from our Public Works. I don't think our department heads and our employees get enough credit for all the work that they do on the side for all the different requests that they get from our residents in this village. So, you know, I appreciate what Shannon did, but also I appreciate what our forester did, our Public Works director, and of course, Peter did to help roll on. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Building, planning, zoning, trustee Sussman is absent, do you know of any report?
No, the planning commission meeting, board council. For lack of agenda items, so there's nothing else.
Thank you. So building, excuse me, public relations, economic development, and open government, trustee Shevitz?
Oh, you do not.
I do not.
Well, thank you, and we have no need for an executive session today, so with that, I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
Go move.
We have two motions. Who wants to be second?
I don't care.
All right, so we'll give the motion to trustee Ballerine, the second to trustee Reynolds, Kathy Haley, or clerk, would you...
He didn't even make it, he'll take.
Oh, well, I thought it was from Joe. Okay, I stand corrected, trustee Sachi is the motion, trustee Reynolds is the second, and let's adjourn, please call a roll.
Trustee South.
Aye.
Trustee Reynolds.
Aye.
Trustee Sachi.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, meeting is adjourned. Jeez, Joe, if you're starting to sound like...